It's 12-02, so we'll call the economic development meeting to order. If the executive assistant will please call roll. Do we have a form present? Need approval of minutes of our July 25 regular meeting?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills and Communications, review of accounts payable, August 1, 2017.
No questions for me.
Questions from anybody? Bills?
Sergeant.
We need a motion first. Need a motion first.
No, I don't think we need one, do we?
No, not for this.
These are not, okay.
These are last week's.
Oh, okay. Report, delinquency update.
We have none, but we'll get to it on new business 6A, what we have. And issue that we have to deal with. Okay?
Moving on to our unfinished business, residential incentive program.
My question to you is, do you want to, the report is included in the report on the budget. Do you want to deal with that here, or do you want to deal with that when we go and talk about the budget? My suggestion to you is we include to do the discussion of the budget, is what we do here will lead into the budget for the 280 account. So let's do it at that time as opposed to this point of the meeting.
Okay. Director's report, Cutting Edge.
Cutting Edge sent me an email that was sitting when I got back from my last meeting outside of the office this morning. What Cutting Edge says is he's been out of town, that he will get the materials we've asked him for to document his assertions, and he will have them for us at the next meeting. I would suggest that we be prepared at the next meeting that if he does not provide the materials that we have requested, that we be prepared to look at a different route for collecting on the loan if necessary.
So in other words, he has been pushing this aside from emails and...
It has not been as high a priority for him, I would say, as it has been for us.
So therefore should we continue being proactive and come up with this resolution?
He said he was going to work with me over the next two weeks. If we don't have an answer in the next two weeks, then we need to be prepared to go a different route. It's gone long enough. Is that fair?
Sounds good to me.
Yep. Grove, Minnesota, the visits?
We have gone to Northdale Oil, Fertile, Fertilong, Mayo, Altima. We have the visits lined up with Leescher Land RV. We have visits lined up with Northern Valley Machine and with Dakota Pete. In the next coming days, that will conclude the visits. We are hoping to have a report to provide to you on the 22nd. If it's not ready, then it will be for the meeting the day after Labor Day. And it will summarize what we have found.
Moving into new business, Beedall.
Mr. Beedall has had a health setback, as was included in your packet. He has asked for some relief. He asked for either deferral on the loan, or the other thing that he asked for was the possibility of forgiving the loan. I told him I would bring the information to you. He will be out because it's gone to, he's having surgery. Had surgery yesterday, apparently. It will take about three to four months for him for recovery again. So what is the pleasure of the EDA?
Forgiveness is no.
But forgiveness is divine, remember?
I understand that.
Shall we defer? Shall the, like we did last time, and like we would with other people who are similarly situated, defer and give him a four-month hiatus? And then if he has to go longer than four months, he has to provide additional documentation?
Has he been up until now and he's been paying?
He has been making his payments.
Okay, so he has been making his payments or anything?
He has been making his payments, but he has asked for relief from that right now. That's why when we came back to delinquencies, I don't believe he paid August. So therefore it's getting close to the point where we would bring it to your attention. But because this was on the agenda, I deferred discussing it until this point in the agenda.
I guess my thought is, I don't have a problem working with him. I mean, if he has a medical issue and he's been paying up until now. I mean, there's, things happen. I get that.
I'd rather see like a two-month and see what happens with him during that period.
It was a three-month recovery period.
Is that what they're saying?
That's what they're saying.
So if you're going to do that, I would suggest three, Tim?
Three.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Motion for three months.
I just got a question real quick. So he had surgery yesterday, so I'm assuming he's going to go back for an evaluation here soon? And then we'll know if it's three or four months or whatever. So if we just give him the one-month deferral and then tell him that he needs to get additional paperwork, I don't know why we should give him two months. I think we give him one month, like you stated here, one month with interest accruing, and then we'll see where we're at if we need to go further if we can.
Because it's saying right here, return to work with limitations, return to work on date 8/21/17.
Actually, I questioned him on that.
That's what I was looking at too.
And what he did is, it comes under not able to work, and the comment, chronic dislocation will need surgery on 8/21/17. That was moved up to 8/7/17. That comment, that is all part of the comment regarding that first line.
Got it. It's just written over into extra lines.
Yes, I questioned that as well.
I would change it to one month instead of two, would be my thought, and then we reevaluate it.
We're actually going three.
Well, what Daniel is saying, let's do it one month, he's got to provide the documentation for the recovery time.
Yeah, and there was no second on my motion anyway, so.
Do you have to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw it.
Okay. Motion withdrawn.
I would make a motion to stick with the recommendation given by our EDA director. You know, one-month deferral with interest, and then provide a documentation, and then we can figure out where to go from there.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And now we get to the big part of the meeting. I sent you a fairly long memo. I don't send long memos very often. The first part of the memo deals with the 620 account, which are our basic operating expenditures. In the 620 account, I, the, what I have done is I have kept the commodities and contractuals the same as they were a year ago in total, but I have adjusted some dollars to reflect what actual expenditures patterns are, and to move money from professional services that were going to be used for the website development to the promotion develop, to the promotion line item, in order to provide money for the marketing efforts and for the marketing plan. So, in the general supplies, it's an increase of $600 to $3,000. For the educational and training fees, a decrease of $600 to $2,400. Legal professional services, decline of $1,000 to $14,000, because it better reflects what we're actually paying our legal counsel. Sorry about that, Ron. Professional services, decrease of $8,000 to $6,000, because we're working on the website internally, and we're going to, we'll put the monies into promotion for the use and developing of the marketing plan and strategy, and for consulting services in that regard. Travel expenses, increase of $1,800 to $6,000 to reflect actual expenditure patterns. And let me explain a little bit about educational and travel. In my background, some of the things that we put into travel, I had historically put into educational training, so that's why I have to adjust between the two accounts. And it's just different ways that different organizations do business. That's fine. And promotion is increase of $7,200 to $9,000, provide additional marketing funds, and provide funding for a marketing and promotion strategy. And all other, I'm recommending no change in any other commodity account. And I would point out, in this corner of the table are some materials I received from a friend of mine who has my position in another city. They just are, they've just put together some marketing materials. If you want to look at some of the things that they've been working on, they're here in the corner. I brought them in today. This came on, I got it on Sunday, in fact, when I finally went to the mailbox. So it's timely. So on the 620 account, are there any questions, thoughts?
Need a motion for approval on that?
I would ask for a motion to approve on that, please.
We have a motion for approval on the changes?
I have a motion.
Second?
A second.
By Daniel? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The second part is the 280 account, and as we go through this, this is where we fund almost all of our residential incentives. So this requires a lot of discussion. For legal expenses, it's an increase of $3,000 to $15,000. This is where Ron makes it up, okay? Because this is where his work is actually going on. It's for things like closings and preparing the legal documents for sales. We have been making a concerted effort to include all the 280 expenses in this account rather than in 620 where they had been previously assigned. And they were still doing some adjusting between the two accounts to make sure that the monies are assigned for expenditures to the place where they're actually being spent. Miscellaneous would be a decrease of $5,000 to $15,000 as we're taking things out of miscellaneous and assigning them to the proper accounts. And you see that with legal services. For promotion advertising, it's an increase of $2,000 to $12,000 to reflect increased marketing and promotional activities. Again, the total dollar amount for commodities in this area of the budget will remain unchanged. I just moved items to places where they are better fit. The real issue is, comes with loan purchases, lot purchases and loans. This is the line for the new home residential incentive programs, which include the $5,000 new home forgivable mortgage, a $5,000 landscaping reimbursement, and property tax rebates. This line is underfunded. In fact, there is no dedicated revenue source, other than what we receive from lot sales, and our lot sales do not provide the money to do this, because they're bare bones, and they only reflect the revenues that are adequate to pay these incentives for people who buy homes from the city of East Grand Forks. And we know that we have other residential builders in the community, and we have no revenue source to cover these expenditures for those builders. And we like, we welcome them, and we're glad that they're here. But if we're going to do this, we need to make sure there's a revenue source. If we're going to continue these programs, we need to make sure there is a revenue source that's adequate to fund the programs. Last meeting, we heard from some realtors. Realtors had some questions about the $5,000 forgivable loan. They liked the property tax rebate, and they didn't have a lot of comments on the landscaping grant. Based on the information presented to the EDA at the last meeting, the $5,000 forgivable loan has perhaps some dubious value as an incentive to induce new home sales, because the average stay on a new home nationally is only seven years. I do not have data for what it is here, as opposed to what it is nationally, but Carla was kind enough to put together information that shows loans that we've given out and loans that we have been repaid for in this category as well. The program does not have a prorated loan repayment. You either satisfy the ten-year residency requirement or repay the loan in full. And it's time to think about what we want to do with this, and whether it adequately meets and serves the needs of the city. I suggest that if the EDA were to recommend the termination of the program, that all people whose new homes receive a certificate of occupancy on or before December 31, 2018, be eligible to receive this incentive, rather than changing the rules for those who have bought and are building now or will be building shortly. There may have been some reliance that we're not aware of. So rather than changing the rules in midstream, we give people a firm deadline that this will be in effect to any home that has a certificate of occupancy to a date certain, December 31, 2018. And after that, the program will go away. If you, if the sentiment of this board, and ultimately the city council, is to do away with that program. So the first question is, do you wish to continue this program? And if you wish to continue, where we, where we, where do we get revenues to continue the program? If we do not wish to continue the program, does that, we have one year of funding liability to deal with, but at that point, are we, do we feel comfortable with saying that it's time to change that and go away from that program? So these are big questions, and it has an impact for the numbers that are going to be put in the budget. It means we probably keep next year's budget the same, but the year after will see a definite impact on the budget.
I like the program. Personally, I think that people that are going to build are going to look at any incentives available. When you're comparing Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, where am I going to build? What are the lot prices? What are the incentives? I think any little bit helps when people are looking at it, because of the cost of building nowadays is so high. So I do like the program that we do have it, have it available. People are going to kind of work that maybe into their decision a little bit, whether they build over here or in Grand Forks. But if they end up moving within 10 years, then that's their own issue. You know, they might look at it as a benefit upfront and think they're going to stay 10 years, and they might not, but then they do have to pay it back. But it might be help and a determining factor where they do build the home to start with. Now, I know the hurdle is then, is where do we come up with that money if we do continue the program? But I think the incentives that we do offer right now, I do think they are a benefit for us. Maybe we need to advertise them a little bit harder to get people to build over here a little bit more, but...
I don't disagree with you, and I'm just going to put my two cents in, as if you don't have any funding, because it's all coming out of the 280 fund. What you really need to be doing is going back to the city council to find out if they want to continue to support these types of programs, and ask them to put some money in the budget for the, for the program.
And I kind of was understanding after our last meeting, that's what was going to happen at the council.
Well, it will come through us by way of the budget to go to the council for discussion.
But we already said there's no budget, so it is.
But it, it, when we're putting together the budget, we're trying to determine how much money, and Carla and I need guidance on how much money that we need to put into the budget. We can estimate based upon past expenditures, how much needs to be there. Then we can talk to the city council about where to get the revenues from. Right now, they're transferred in out of the general fund, but there needs to be a conscious recognition on the part of the city council that we're going to be getting, and I'm pulling out a number, just for, a number, pulling out, say, $100,000 that we're going to be using to fund these programs citywide. And whatever, whatever the EDA and the city council decide, we will carry out. At this point, it's a policy decision, and the policymakers, you as the recommending body and them as the decision body, need to make a decision on what you want to do.
I understand everything that Justin's saying. I think it's the only benefit to guys like us that live and breathe East Grand Forks. I don't think it's going to pull people in from other areas just because of that.
No, I don't think it's going to.
So that's why I say therefore, the property tax thing could be a big thing. I say we do away with these programs, figure out how to keep the property tax into it, figure out what we got to do to get rid of these lots, to bring that tax base back to the city, to the people. And if it's that, we got to go with realtors and help them push it, I think we need to go there, personally. Because we're paying, what was it, $10,000 a year just to mow them? I mean, we're kind of dribbling on ourselves here and...
There's $100,000 plus per year in specials too.
Yes. And then on the next thing on them, specials, how soon before they're up?
I don't know the answer to that. Carla, do you know the answer to that for you, Paul? Don't know. In any event, part of the sale of the price of the lots, since it includes special, is to recover all past expenditures by the city that the city's made on those specials too.
Right.
The home building incentive that we did, when those homes are sold and the price of the lot and the $100,000 comes back to us, does that go back into helping fund this?
Yes.
Right.
Yes. When we have, there's been one home that has been sold where the money has gone back into the account. And that's, I mean, that's because we are pulling so much from the account to do those. When we get that money back, it puts it, at that point in time, it put it back into a slightly positive, and now it's slightly negative as I recall.
Until we get some of that back, that, when we do get that back, that would help these incentives for a while anyways.
It's a short-term solution, because it's, there's, it comes a time, whether it's next year or the year after, if we were to be repaid all of that money all at once, there's going to come a time when the money doesn't exist.
Right, we're borrowing from Peter.
Yes.
Right. Has everybody that's built a house out there used that? Or have we had some people who have chosen not to use that? We have one, I think, that...
I have anecdotally heard of a couple of people who knew they were not going to be staying in the house for 10 years and have chosen not to take the dollars. But it's because they knew in their own situation they were not going to be there. But that's, tends to be the unusual situation as opposed to the normal situation.
Well, and then that's interesting to note too with this, but the other part is too, is the question I would ask is, is $5,000, should we be asking, giving more? Should we be giving less?
We can't get rid of, we can't get rid of what we got by giving away what we're giving away from borrowing from Peter to pay Paul.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, if we're going to go ask for more money, and we're going to put more money into this budget potentially, do we want to continue with $5,000? Maybe we should do less than $5,000. Maybe we should do more than $5,000. I mean, I'm curious to know what people's thoughts would be on that as well.
But we ran out of money. That's why we can't go back to more.
So do we look at lowering it then, or getting rid of it all again?
Getting rid of it. Do the taxing, incentive. What I'm saying is, is this has been going on since 1998 roughly. And we're still sitting on, what would you say, Paul, 52?
52 lots.
And...
Those lots aren't all there though yet. Those lots weren't developed until the golf course was, correct?
Correct.
And so what year is that?
I think the lots go back to like, I want to say 2005 to 2009, somewhere in that range.
So now we're at 12 years. And maybe a third had been sold? It ain't half.
I don't know how many lots were there originally.
But I mean, when you just look around and you drive out there at a quick glance, I'd say maybe a third. Would you say, Ron?
Well, you have to remember that incentive isn't just used out there, it's been used all over the city.
Right.
Where that incentive may have helped bring a decision for other people to build somewhere else in the city, just potentially not on the lots that the city owns right now.
Right. But I guess back to what I say though, it ought to have 10, maybe one have come from the other side of the river. It's still the good old boys type thing, that this, we love this town.
Or somebody moving in that's air-based, or somebody that doesn't really have an affiliation one side or the other.
Don't care, yeah.
And those are the sales that I'm looking at, potentially hoping to grasp onto is, you know, we see it all the time, if you live in Grand Forks, born and raised there, most time you stay over there and vice versa. Yeah, you do get a little bit back and forth, but where we need to capitalize, what I'm looking at also is like what Ron said, is the people coming from outside, and then they're going to look at lot prices, incentives, what school do we want to send our kids to? There's a lot of things that people are going to take into consideration with, if they're going to build, where they're going to build. If they're moving to town.
There's a military pension benefit also available in Minnesota for home buyers, homeowners. Or actually for anybody, it's a pension benefit.
That's through the military.
To military, that's a military pension benefit. Carla, when do you need this information? Because they may want to think on this a little bit longer and come to a decision next time on a recommendation.
Well, we're presenting preliminary, preliminary one, and having a meeting next, Thursday, 17.
On, Tim, on your side, city council side, have... Talk to me, Goose.
From listening to what the realtor said, I really don't think that the $5,000 forgivable loan really does any benefit. From the city council side, I know we're trying to cut taxes.
And this is a way to do it.
You moved from Grand Forks without the incentive.
There's no incentive to me to move over here. I didn't, I couldn't, I didn't use it anyway.
I mean, I love this town, city, whatever, but if my wife's the house, move to Grand Forks tomorrow morning, I'm fine. I, you know, but I love it over here. Incentive ain't keeping me here.
It didn't make me want to build a house here. I mean, I came from Grand Forks, and I just, I liked the community where I was at and everything out there on the point. I mean, the incentive wasn't, I saw it all there, and it was a thought that ran through my mind, but it wasn't...
It wasn't the deciding factor.
It wasn't what I wanted to do, no. So...
So does someone want, stepping in your shoes, does someone want to make a motion?
Sitting out there, just, do you have any comments? You know, you know a little bit about both sides of the river, you know, living there and working with the...
You know, there are advantages and disadvantages to having the incentive. You know, I had asked the realtors there, they deal with it every day. And the incentive hasn't moved lots on this side of the river over 20 years, so it hasn't worked.
I don't think it has.
No.
There's no bearing on there, they're just saying...
90% of them will push them the other way.
So maybe it's time for a motion on the other.
Yep. Does anybody have a motion on the incentive?
I got one more question. So when they don't stay there for 10 years and then they end up having to repay it, that money goes back into that account?
Yes.
So if we have people out there that don't stay for 10 years, and we don't have an incentive anymore, that account could potentially fill up with money again then, basically?
I don't think it's going to fill up.
No.
Use it for the tax rebates.
Okay, so then it'll go towards the tax rebate, so that's, by getting rid of this, we can continue funding the tax rebate, correct?
We'll get to the rest of that in just a minute.
All right. I just want to make sure I understood the implications here.
Yeah. There are a couple more things that come out of here that we need to deal with, okay?
Okay.
But let's just deal with...
Do we know, does Grand Forks have a new home incentive for building or first time to buy?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm not aware of one, I don't believe so.
Just curious.
Except have the leather for the amount for the lot and the taxes in the specials.
I think, I think your competition is Crookston.
Yep.
And Crookston has different...
They're giving them away.
They gave their lots away originally, now they're, they just readdressed some of it last night. They hired, I think we talked earlier, they hired a, a realtor to figure out the
Value.
value of the lots, and then to sell the lots for them.
And because they're, they're running out of land though, developed.
Yeah, they've got 11 lots left.
Yeah. I, my motion is, is to drop the incentives, but I'd want to put in there to keep the property tax rebate.
Well, let's get to that. We're not dealing with that. Well, let's get to that. We're not dealing with that. Just, just the five thousand.
Drop it.
I'll second that.
Continue it through December thirty-first of twenty eighteen? Cause there are people who build homes and expect...
Continuing with lot setters, I don't wanna go through twenty eighteen.
Why twenty-eight?
Because it takes, what we're finding is it takes nine to ten months for a home that, once it starts construction. This is for any home that has a certificate of occupancy by the end of next year. That gives it basically a sixteen-month period to complete a home.
But can you say for any lots sold before twelve thirty-one, is that twenty seventeen?
We could do that. And there's different ways we could say it like that.
And no matter what expires December of this year, I say.
Okay.
But the ones that are sold now and if they're building?
Well, wouldn't there be building permits out there right now?
Exactly, that's...
Well, if you buy a lot, for example, buy a lot now, from what Carla suggested, if you buy a lot now and start building in January of next year, that home would also still be eligible for the program.
As long as you purchase your lot before the end of this year.
You have to purchase the lot before the end of this year. Or contract for the house to be built. Some way you have...
Needs to be built by December thirty-first of twenty seventeen.
Well, not permit, but...
Building permit.
Well, cause some people aren't gonna pull their permit if they buy a lot in November, December. Still not gonna pull your permit until you're in start.
I'm not worried about them buying in November or December, I guess is where I'm going. I don't think they're gonna buy it.
But I think what we're just saying is that if anybody purchases their lot by the end of this year, they're entitled to the incentive as long as they have their certificate of occupancy by the end of two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
What happens, how many money in the account to fund it?
That's what I'm worried about.
Well, that's, city council will take care of it.
We can come up with a guess, we can come up with a guess of what it's gonna be. Because, well, no, how many lots are out, have been, but do they also have to be, they have to be paid in full? They don't get the thousand dollars down? So, so we can figure, we know how many there are right now.
They have to have closed on the lots.
They have to close on the sale of the lot.
What my bigger concern is, is if somebody's buying a home from Peabody or Crary, for example, they won't have closed on that lot. That lot will be done a different way. So that they, okay? That's why I was thinking certificate of occupancy as opposed to the lot sale.
How do we address, how do we address the incentive for a new home purchase then? So if we're giving people that buy a lot this year until next year for their certificate of occupancy, cause this incentive also goes to somebody that's just buying a brand-new home built. If a builder built a spec home. So how do we deal with?
I mean, I think you gotta have it dropped that date. So I mean, the easiest way to do it is, if you haven't bought your, if you haven't bought your home or bought your lot by December thirty-first...
Of next year.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Yeah.
If you've bought it, you bought, there's always an end to incentives.
Yeah.
So you've gotta figure out, you know, oh damn, I missed it. You know, so you either get it or you don't. And if you, if you've closed on your house or closed on your loan, or you know, you purchased a lot, whether it's from us or anybody else by December thirty-first, you're potentially in. If it's January first of twenty eighteen, you missed it by a day.
Well, I think that's where Paul's recommendation comes into play.
Before the end of the year now.
Yeah.
I mean, you really find out. That's the other part too, is if you put a hard line debt on it, you might increase lot sales, but then we're gonna have that many more people to pay out of the two eighty as well.
Don't worry about that then.
Well, we, we deal with, between ten and twenty homes per year. Okay, so we're talking between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars depending upon the deadline we set.
And we've given out six so far.
Yeah.
So there'll be six more on a normal year.
Okay. So that's what we deal with. That, that's the magnitude of the dollars. It's not huge dollars. At the same time, it's dollars that are important because again, we want to be careful with what we're using taxpayer dollars for.
I like the recommendation that Paul gave, that we just end it December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. That takes care of anybody that purchases a lot, buys a home. If you purchase your lot July next year and can still get it built and your certificate of occupancy before December eighteenth then so be it. But that gives us a hard cutoff date, no matter what, and then we don't have to deal with, well, you purchased your lot this time, but you didn't get in until this time, and but somebody bought a house ten days after and they didn't get the incentive. But you're still gonna get it, you don't move in until six months after somebody else did.
Is that your motion?
I would make a motion on that, that we just end it December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen and you have to have your certificate of occupancy by then, no matter if you purchase a lot, buy a house, whatever.
Think you have a second?
If you purchase a house, you don't get a certificate of occupancy.
Well...
But the house has to have a certificate of occupancy in place. Okay? Think you're gonna get a second?
I don't, second then? George seconds. All in favor?
Let's do a roll call.
Okay.
She's trying to keep up. Poor Brenda.
Nay.
Yes.
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 No.
No.
Fails.
Tied.
It's tied.
It fails, a tie vote. Fails on, I mean, the motion fails on a tie vote. Okay. Well, there's not a puck here either.
Go back to the motion eliminated on...
Yeah.
Three noes were black, grindy, and reappell.
Go back to the motion he made to eliminate a December this year.
Is that your motion?
I'll make the motion.
Should we be clear on what the motion is?
The incentives, basically incentives are scratched by December of twenty seventeen, December thirty-first.
So if you're not eligible by having certificate of occupancy, and so closing papers, et cetera, by December thirty-first?
No, for close of the lot. You have to purchase the lot.
Or purchase the house.
Or purchase the house.
And this is only applying to the five thousand, right?
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure that we're clear on that.
So if you buy a lot December, January first, you lost out.
Okay.
And then they have to have their certificate of occupancy by when?
By eighteen, by, by the end of the year. Or ten months, or however you wanna word it, ten months from the time of...
There could be heavy rain or whatever, I would see, through the whole year, cause you have a limited field that will be eligible.
It's easier for people to remember that too then.
Yeah.
Say that again?
It's easier to remember, for people to remember December and December. I got a year to build it.
Yeah.
April fifteenth is what I remember. Uncle Sam.
Motion?
The motion is to end December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. If you've purchased your lot or the house by then and you have to have your certificate of occupancy before...
December thirty-first.
December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, if you purchased the lot.
So, just for clarification for what Brenda and I would have to, and Carla would have to do to administer the program, when you say purchase of the lot, you mean close on the lot, or do you mean...
Close on the lot.
Paid in full.
Paid in full by December.
Because the program applies to lots where that will not be the situation, two things. One, we have an incentive program where the builder for a thousand dollars down can build on a lot. So instead of a homeowner closing on that lot, the builder can be building the home on that lot for a thousand dollars down and we carry them.
No, but somebody's bought the lot.
Exactly.
Okay.
We've already transferred the lot to the builder.
Okay.
Correct, exactly.
And will that also apply for Crary?
Is, I don't want somebody come in September of two thousand eighteen. That's, that's my whole reasoning behind it. I wanna be able to start...
For administration, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, so we can apply it in a way that this board and the council will ultimately want it to be done. The other thing is if somebody buys a lot from Peabody, that you're talking about the same way, where a builder buys a lot by the end of this year, or buys it from Crary, buys a lot by the end of this year, and then the home, the house actually transfers with the lot sometime during two thousand eighteen.
Fine.
Okay. Okay, so we can administer it all the same, so it's fair for everybody.
Correct.
Okay. So you have a motion?
I'll second that.
I'm wondering about, what about new home purchase? So what if somebody comes into a purchase agreement, November, December, but because of appraisal processes and whatever holding them up, they actually don't close on that until after December thirty-first?
The lot would've been sold though to the builder.
No, no, new home purchase.
Or not, you know, I, I, well, does it have to be even a spec home? Could it be, you're buying my house?
No, because the incentive only applies, the incentive only applies to somebody that lives in the home for the first time.
And I think it's gotta be closed with, that, that, they're just a deadline.
It's a deadline, I mean, they're just out of luck.
And that was the only reason I made the motion to have everything run till the deadline next year. We don't have anything set. If you do something by this date, you can still get it twelve months later. And that was my only intention between, you know, be, by having one deadline. Doesn't matter when you buy your lot, when you buy a house, the deadline is here, where right now we're setting two separate deadlines.
And the reason I say no about that, cause I know where you're going.
But I, see, I don't like the fact of that if you buy, you buy a lot December thirty-first and wait to break ground July first, you're still gonna get the incentive. But somebody comes to town, finds a new home, buys that home, but can't get through the process of the closing until January fifteenth, but they entered into an agreement December first, that person that bought a lot is still gonna get an incentive six, twelve months later.
I, I understand.
That could happen on your motion too though.
Yeah.
That could happen and keep going. We, we keep this going.
Well, no, but because you're, if you, if you buy a lot in September of two thousand eighteen, you still have to have your certificate of occupancy by December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. That only had one deadline on it. It's not giving somebody an advantage to buy a lot and sit on it for a while and build and still get the incentive a year later, whereas somebody might buy a house at the same time as that person, but not be able to close on the house because, just because of appraisals backed up or the bank backing up, and then they close a month and a half later and they lost out on the incentive.
I get what you're going after a hundred and ten percent, okay? But what I'm, what, the reason for my motion is, is I want these fricking lots gone and I don't wanna have this money problem anymore. I'm sick of talking about them. I'm gonna throw up. And we need to do something for the tax base, period. You're, you see what's going on the council side. If we don't react to something, all of us here are in trouble with taxes. We're worrying about a hundred thousand dollars with a potential of eight people versus a population of what, eighteen, fifteen?
Eighteen, six hundred.
Yeah. That's gonna have a big financial impact. That's my biggest concern.
But I, I just wanna make, while I'm bringing it up, the motion, I don't have a problem with the motion, I'm just making sure that we make it clear on lots and new home purchase.
December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, cut it off.
Lots and homes.
Lots and homes.
I agree.
So the home has to be closed on...
By December thirty-first.
Of seventeen.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And Daniel, second that motion. So... Do you want a roll call please?
She's trying to catch up again.
Yes.
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 Yes. She carries.
Now actually comes the easier part in all of this.
Thank God.
The landscaping, the landscaping grant also comes out of this account. It's a rebate. The landscaping rebate serves a purpose for beautification of the city. There's very little money that's actually involved each year. It's five hundred dollars that caps per home. It's available over a ten-year period. The recommendation is that that be continued because of the purpose, the public purpose that it's serving.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And on the third one, the property tax rebate, the recommendation is to continue it. It seems to be an effective way to...
Landscape your yard.
Yeah, that will do it too. But I mean, it's an effective way to have homeowners continue to invest in their homes and to cause the initial investment. What, after we get done with this, I have other questions involving that, but, so...
I'll make that motion to keep the property tax incentive.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, we're in a position where we need to renew that, because it's limited to homes that, that are finished by the end of this year. Last time we talked about renewing it for an extended, a longer period. My recommendation would be to extend it to homes built through two thousand twenty-one. But because it takes a little bit of time to get them on the tax rolls, it means that property, that program would have to be funded probably, it'll take a year to two years, actually three years to get on the program, to fund the program through two thousand twenty-five for homes built through two thousand twenty-one. Okay? And that just gives us the time that allows for the homes to come up to full tax value.
Has anybody talked to the school and county about continuing?
It's already started, yes. Thank you. I talked with the county the other day and I will be following up with the school and once we decide we wanna proceed. If we decide that we wanna proceed. I gather from the vote that we wanna proceed. My, my question is how long?
How, how long was the first incentive, like?
You get two years of property tax rebates. This goes back, what, ten years or so, or so Carla? As far as I can tell, ten, twelve years, somewhere in that range of when it first began. And what we do is the last time we renewed it was for an additional two years for the home construction, but to allow through two thousand twenty-one for the, to fund the program as well. So this way, instead of doing it every two years, it'll be for a four-year period. And that's just for convenience, our convenience. Since it's a popular program, it makes sense to do it in a way that shows that there's some continuity there.
So it'll go, so your, your recommendation is to go through two thousand twenty-one?
Two thousand twenty-one, homes have to be built by, through the end of two thousand twenty-one. And that means that it has to be funded through two thousand twenty-five, cause it takes a year to two years for the homes to come up to full tax value.
And at that time, we can reevaluate at two thousand twenty-one? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Ron has something.
And then the only other thing that I would clarify is, or consistent with the school and county.
Yes.
Cause they're gonna have a little bit of control on what's going on if they only wanna go out two years, then I would follow suit.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The other program that we have is the Down Payment Assistance Program. Carla, it comes out of a different account. I don't remember which account it's in.
It's out of the six thirty-three point, the Down Payment Assistant Program.
Yeah, we basically have one loan that's active in there. Biggest problem is the limits that we have on that. It's at a hundred and forty thousand dollar house value. It's eighty thousand dollar income, family income value. I would suggest we increase that to two hundred thousand dollars for the home value and a hundred thousand dollars for the income and continue with the program. It's a minimal thing. I will say this, there are comparable, there's a comparable program on a county-wide basis as well.
Yes, I agree. I'll make the motion.
Josh, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, one other thing on the budget. I have asked Carla to include money in the budget for a, thinking down the road in the capital improvement program, the capital improvement plan for an industrial park. That's about a million and one and a half, about one point five million dollars for the purchase and somewhere depending upon where the land is, four to eight million dollars for infrastructure. We are putting this in the fiscal year two thousand twenty, but it's there. We are putting this in the fiscal year 2020, but it's there so we can adjust it as we need to, for when we need to go forward with the industrial park. But it's time to start thinking about that, because you remember when we started talking about parcels? We don't have any money to buy that. But we need to be thinking about this as a long-term municipal investment, and then we have to be thinking about how we are actually going to pay for it. So this will force us to start thinking about how to pay for it. Does anybody have any objection to that being in the capital improvement plan?
I, not me.
That's what I've got today.
Barry, did you have anything for, for your favor?
I think you can win yourself.
Nothing else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.